Good evening, everybody. Call a city council meeting to order for Tuesday, November 12th. And for invocation tonight, we have Pastor Todd Harris from Old Kites Covenant Church. Hi.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. In Psalms 127, it says, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the builders labor in vain; and unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain." So let's ask the Lord for His leading. Father God, we thank you for your love for our town. What a pleasant place to live. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness to us. We pray your blessing for wisdom for our council members, and we give you thanks, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is recognitions of gifts, donations, community service. Anybody tonight?
I got a couple. Farm City Day brought out a lot of people out to fairgrounds. Always very lucky that we had AgrTalk was out there, so Hutch was noted nationwide. I want to thank Cashwise and KDZ for really promoting this and keeping it going. And then the second one is our helicopter. Special recognition should go to Dave Blake and Dave Scoog for the work they did to get this thing done and on the pedestal. The program was tremendous. And once again, I want to thank also our Parks Department for laying all the favors and everything around the base of it. But also, I want to thank the people of Hutchinson and McLeod County for all the donations to pick up the cost of this project. It was a very big crowd that day and nice weather, and so I think these people should be recognized for job well done.
A lot of different people and organizations and businesses contributed. That's good. Anything else? Just want to congratulate our athletic teams and the success that they did have, as well as the teams that are still playing the football. So, anything else?
Don't forget our cross-country boys team.
Yep, the win.
Fifth.
Yep. Third-place finish for Mr. Barlow, so very good.
So we keep the city of Hutch on the map, totally.
Different ways.
Many ways.
Okay, next is public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to address the council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is David Allen. I live at 12552-200 Street. And I wanted to address to you this evening about an issue related to the comprehensive plan and why I believe the comprehensive plan needs more discussion and substantial revision before it should be approved. The issue, I don't think, has been brought up before, and it's an issue of inappropriate behavior on the part of people who've been appointed to public positions. And I'll give some examples. I'm going to mention some names. I want to preface this by saying, I don't know these people personally. I'm sure, in many ways, they're very good people. You probably do know some of these people personally. And I would ask you to have an open mind about listening to these examples and thinking about, is this really appropriate for members appointed to public commissions to behave this way? The first example I'm going to give happened, I think, before some of you were even in official positions, but goes back to 1997, when a piece of land, which is about a mile west of the intersection of South Grade Road and School Road, across the bridge going over Otter Lake on the south side there, was purchased from a farm family by two members of the current planning commission and two other individuals. And they used their city contacts to persuade the city to annex that land and extend water and sewer to that land. And they flipped it to a private developer, and it's now a very nice place to live. But as you drive out there, you drive past a number of empty cornfields and soybean fields, land that you might say, well, why wouldn't it make more sense to have water and sewer extended there?
David, this is looking forward. It's not looking back. So, and I can, you're a guest to talk, but let's keep it on the issue at hand and going forward, which this plan is all focused on.
Okay, well, I'm trying to set the stage by saying that the comprehensive plan that is being considered for approval by this committee is failing to address a pattern of unethical behavior, which has been going on for many years.
I think that's your opinion.
Okay, and I'm willing to give examples of factual statements, and you can make your own assessment as to whether those are opinions.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this subject?
Just a second, please. I would like to ask that you submit those to the city attorney, so he can review and see if it's applicable or not for the current situation. Because I don't want you, you know, implying or unethical behavior when there wasn't anything there. There might be some opinions, but, you know, we're talking about facts and people's reputations and...
That was my intention, was to report facts, and then it would be...
Well, some of that, I think, is conjecture as far as what happened and why it happened. So...
Well, I have a number of examples. I won't, I won't give them, but if I could...
No, Bill?
Sir, if you'd been around at that time, I happen to sit on the Lynn Town Board. When the proposal came up to develop that land out there, it was in Lynn Township. Proposal went through Lynn Township, and at that time, it was put up to the county. Pollution Control came out there and said, no way are you going to allow 140 houses, 140 wells, 140 septic tanks on lakeside property. So what was left to do? They went through the process of getting it annexed to the city of Hutchinson. It would not have been built on at all, but they went through the process. It was annexed from Lynn Township to the city of Hutchinson, which I am very happy it did, because I was hurting pursuing problem myself. I lived just east of the lake. I've lived in that community all my life, and it was the heirs of the estate that had that property. What did they do with it? They wanted to develop it, maybe just for a few homes along the lake at first. But that's how it all started, and it was not anybody on any board or anybody else in town. You can say, myself, I was a Lynn Town Board Chairman, I think, at that time. We went through this process. We had many people out there surveying it.
Well, if I could, I appreciate that you don't want me to go through all my examples, but I would say that this example and the others that I wanted to give are examples of people with connections to the cities, longstanding connections to the city, who have purchased land, profited from that purchase by then flipping it to other owners. And they get in the middle of these transactions, and that's my concern. It's not about whether or not water and sewer should have been extended to that piece of property.
These are all public documents. They're available for everybody to use and plan around, and that's part of the reason for it, is for developers to be aware of what city growth might look like and what the staging might look like, and then people can make decisions on what they feel. So with that, if you want to submit your information...
I will do that. And what I am requesting, just to conclude my comments, is that the city council take into consideration that the comprehensive plan includes and has been influenced by opportunities for people with connections to expand the value of their properties. And I see people shaking their head, no, but if I could give examples, I think I could show that. And I think also, it does, what we are lacking in our city governance is we're lacking a code of ethics, a conflict of interest policy, requiring council members and commissioners to submit affidavits annually saying what their business interests are, and we are lacking a steady influx of a diverse range of people on commissions. And that's what I would like to see addressed. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I'm Jim Lauer. I live in Lynn Township. However, I'm here tonight as the current Chair of the Joint Planning Board, primarily just to make sure, as you go through your process, because I don't intend to comment on the comprehensive plan itself, but just understanding, there's a lot of confusion out there of the role of the Joint Planning Board. After the event the gentleman talked about, December of 97 is when McLeod County, with the assistance of their outside council and paid advisors, created the Joint Planning Ordinance. And with the signature of the Joint Planning Ordinance by the city, the county, and all four of the surrounding townships, the Joint Planning Ordinance was put into effect. That ordinance is what created the Joint Planning Board. There was not a board that preceded it, involved in the development of that ordinance. That ordinance was developed by McLeod County. Since that time, in 2003, six years later, Lynn Township appointed me as their representative to that board, finishing my 10th year, and I'll be moving off the board, and I've been the Chair for the last five years. One of the key and primary purposes of that ordinance was to streamline a cumbersome process by which property owners had to go through multiple steps to develop their property. They had to go to a township board for approval. They had to report to the county's planning commission for, and not approval for recommendations. And then the county board ultimately made the call. The primary purpose was to streamline that process and have one entity that property owners could come to address their land use needs. By signing that and taking a part of that, all of the entities gave up some of their rights and powers. The city, under statute, because the ordinance was created years later, gave up its ability to influence certain actions within the two-mile radius of the county, because the ordinance existed. The townships gave up their ability to approve and make recommendations on approval primarily to those land use people that lived within their township. The county planning commission was taken out of loop completely. So the streamlined process had one stop for people to be able to bring their desires, and it helped spread up the development process. We make recommendations to the county board, and the county board is the decision factor within that area. So we exist as an advisory part of the county board. Every motion that gets made, seconded, and passed is addressed to the county board. We don't address recommendations and issues to each of the entities. When a township changes one of their ordinances, we don't review it. They just will come and let us know what's going on. Now, being neighborly, one of the nice things that's done there is when somebody's got something major going on, they come to, they bring it to us, so we all kind of aware of what's going on in the area and what are the issues. Two and a half years ago, while I was the Chair, the city raised the fact that it was going to be updating the comprehensive plan. The overall feedback of the Joint Planning Board was, it's about time, because obviously, based on the economy, the document that existed was no longer valid. And there were a lot of townships that had issues with it. At that point, we invited the townships to participate in that process. Two members of our board, sitting at that time, from Hassan Valley and Hutchinson Townships, were our primary representatives to that planning process. And beyond our meetings, they participated in a number of planning events from the very get-go. Now, the extent to which they continued to do that waxed and waned based on their personal commitments and whether or not they continued on their township boards. Throughout that process, we had numbers of updates periodically to us, so we all heard those presentations. A lot of the updates came from our representatives from the two townships that were participating. And we also had a number of workshops where we were all invited to include our entire township boards to come and hear what the status of it was, what were the current milestones. Some townships elected to attend en masse, others elected just to have their rep from the Joint Planning Commission attend. But we were throughout that process. As the process neared its end, we started having more detailed presentations, and since we were going to have a very detailed presentation, the city offered to make it another public hearing, in addition to the mandatory ones that they had. And we did take additional inputs, both from our board itself, as well as from members of our communities and our townships. And that's basically being open and contributing to that. The question was raised, why we weren't voting on it, is because that was not our place to vote on it. It's the city's comprehensive plan, and the city needs to take the comments in there. I think one of the good things is it's been very open in the feedback that you have received. At this point in time, you know, we've got things to do within our Joint Planning Ordinance that will continue to grow as well. But we're governed by statute. We're governed by our ordinance, and the fact that any changes we make come from, initially from the county, with the inputs from the people that are here. And so the primary purpose was just to highlight how, why we exist, what our role was, and who we really are there to advise, and why we did not, as a body, make any inputs, but all of our members who had inputs to make have definitely taken that initiative and done that on their own, which is all well and good. So just a little bit of a history lesson, but just kind of putting it in context of what our role was. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Craig Bishop. I live at 221 Fremont here in Hutchinson. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for calling me today. Appreciate him taking the time to, and about our comments, I brought these to the last meeting, and I was just wondering if you could follow up, any comments about any, your members thought about what we had written as far as the different concerns we have about the plan and what you guys thought of it, or any changes you want to make on it?
I think when we get to the actual agenda item, you know, we'll touch on some of the comments and some of the proposed changes.
Okay.
That'll be them, so...
Okay. But you don't...
That'll really be the council's discussion at that point, you know, as we've taken the various comments from the public hearings and your written statements and others that have been submitted, as well as council and staff suggestions as well.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to make, as far as David goes, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I think even Glenn Groonhagen, he's a state representative, told me that they have a statement that they have to sign, an ethics statement, and then they have to, like, property that they own and things like that. So even state representatives have that type of document that they have to sign. I don't think that's a bad idea, you know? And so if the state representatives are, you know, have to do that, it's accountable to the people of Minnesota. I don't, I don't think there's any reason why any of the city council members can't do it either. And it keeps you guys accountable to people, and the people, if the people have any questions about what you own or what you're doing, you can, you can just show them, you know? So, does anybody have a problem with that?
I know the League of Minnesota Cities, a few years ago, they had a group together and had, based it on a city in California that had ethics and values policies and...
Yeah, that's kind of what I was, that type of thing, yeah.
And the League kind of adopted a template, you know, based on that. And we've talked about, actually, adopting it. I don't recall that there was ever a signature form as such, but I don't know, Mark, if you've seen anything with that, or...
I haven't specifically seen a form from the League of Cities. However, we currently have an ethics policy as part of our city code for public officials, and certainly we can make a point of going over that again and what that ordinance requires.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, or council folks, Jim O'Beare, Coma Township, 20926 Gaby Avenue. I also like to thank the mayor for reaching out to me. We had a conversation the other day about some things, and appreciate that, I know you're very busy. I did have some concerns in there that didn't have a chance to talk about then, but one of the concerns I had was as far as, again, I live in the green zone, if you will, to coin a phrase, the area next up for annexation.
Can I just stop you there with, when you say that, the next area up for annexation, I mean, that's the joint planning area, so...
Joint planning area, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, but I mean, there is no, like, next up for annexation. There might be any one segment within that area, if any annexation would be taking place.
Joint planning area sounds fine to me. That's more correct. I, thank you for correcting me. There were some things we talked about with regulations and so forth, too, as far as growth and that type of thing, and I understand some of these things were in the past before, too, but it, something we'll take a look at as we're looking forward. And then also on taxation, I do have concerns about taxation, too. And I guess, just looking online here on the political, the Public Arts Commission under the finances, and again, I know this isn't part of the plan, but the plan enables these kind of things. But some of the sources of funding for the PAC, the Arts Commission, may include a percent of the budget spent on public projects, percent of public site fees for new development. And I'm pretty sure those costs, when they go to property owners, will be passed on to the prices we pay when we come into town to pay. And then towards the bottom, the real last thing is a county tax. So I mean, if we've got a city organization kind of plotting to raise taxes and so forth like that, I mean, I'm just saying, it's right here, it's in their document. And so I can only imagine, if a plan like this is done, that really helps, you know, emphasize the whole, the whole type of deal. So, anyway, taxes are high. People are, you know, struggling right now with medical taxes and 1% taxes and one thing after another, and estate spending. So, just very sensitive to that, that we don't have an infinite capacity to do that. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I think we're all pretty cognizant of that, but appreciate the statements. Anything else? If not, then we've got the minutes from October 22nd meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by Gary, to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda, and all these items would be covered under one motion and vote unless something's pulled off for separate discussion. We don't have anything under resolutions and ordinances. Item B is consideration for approval of improvement project change orders. And we have the change order number one, letting number one, project number 13-01, Jefferson Street, Southeast Reconstruction Phase One. Item two is the supplemental agreement number one, letting number one, project number 13-01, Jefferson Street, Southeast Reconstruction Phase One. Supplemental agreement number one, letting number one, project number 13-01, Jefferson Street, Southeast Reconstruction Phase One. Item C is consideration for approval of items for the Lynn Road Southwest Improvements Project, letting number two, project number 14-02. And item D is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling licenses, Hutchinson Eagles, number 4441, on May 17th, 2014, and the Upper Midwest Alice Chalmers Club on July 27th, 2014. Item E is consideration for approval of city center carpet replacement. Item F is claims appropriations, contract payments, register A. And item G is claims appropriations, contract payments, register B. Anything, anybody want pulled off?
I would like E pulled off.
I have to have G pulled off.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item E, Mary?
Well, I just had a question about the carpet. Has anybody considered doing carpet tiles?
That's exactly what we'll be doing, is carpet tiles. Yeah, that's pretty much the trend with commercial buildings these days, and they're more cost-effective, so that's the way we're going to go. Apologize if that wasn't spelled out more clearly in the packet.
Because I know that's, we've done that in our church, and it just works out a lot better. If you've got a piece that's ruined, you just put in a new tile.
Sure.
Okay. Then I will make a motion for that to pass.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Bill, to approve item E. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then item G.
That will be a check to my son's business, so I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay. So somebody, motion to approve?
Approve.
Second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Bill, to approve item G, with Gary abstaining. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for the consent agenda. We have a public hearing here, so... It's close enough, Mark, two minutes, two. It's consideration of the charter amendments as recommended, it's recommended by the Hutchinson Charter Commission. Mark, do you want to take that?
Certainly. And actually, this is kind of a repeat of some action that the city council considered back in September. Earlier this year, the Hutchinson Charter Commission had met a couple of times and considered some proposed amendments for the Hutchinson City Charter. One of those was to reduce the number of signatures needed to have an ordinance or initiative or recall placed on the ballot within the city of Hutchinson. And the other change they had recommended was, currently under our city charter, requires the mayor, the city administrator, and other officials to post a surety bond to guarantee their faithfulness in office, at least financially. And we're already being covered under our insurance policy with the Minnesota League of Cities for that exact same purpose. So it was the recommendation of the Charter Commission to have that requirement deleted from the city charter. The statute governing charter changes mandates that the changes be approved by the city council, unanimously by the city council and by each city council member. Back in September, we were not able to have two consecutive meetings... member. Back in September, we were not able to have two consecutive meetings where all the city council members were here. So, we weren't able to approve the charter changes at that time. That's why they're back in front of you tonight. And certainly, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the charter changes, that's why we're having a public hearing.
I just wanted to ask what the charter, what it has to do with signatures, is that correct, Mark? For, maybe you can explain a little further. I didn't quite follow the discussion, sir.
Certainly. Currently, under our city charter, it takes, if someone wants to circulate a petition to have an ordinance passed, or to have a recall of a public official, they need 20% of the people who voted for mayor in the last election. Back when that requirement was put into effect, the city of Hutchinson had elections on odd-numbered years. Due to a prior charter change, our elections were switched from odd years to even years. And so the turnout is much greater than it had been. So, you're gonna catch me off-guard here with the amount of signatures required, but I want to say that currently, the amount of signatures that would be required to have a successful petition considered by the city council is 1,200?
I was gonna say around 1,000 to 1,200.
Because of the increased voter turnout, because we switched to even years.
Mm-hmm. Sure, because of their election years, presidential years, people vote for, sure.
Back when it was odd-year election, it was around 600. So this proposal would be putting it back down to that roughly 600 signature requirement, which the Charter Commission thought was more fair to people that were circulating petitions. They wanted to see a change in government.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to know. I just didn't quite follow what your theme.
I'm sorry, I didn't explain that.
That's okay. Thanks for explaining it to me.
It was basically a long way of saying to put it back to how it was before.
Okay. Thank you.
And that percentage, when we looked at other cities and the Charter Commission looked at that, that was pretty common. There weren't too many that were less than that. There were other ones that were more, like that 20% or 15%, but 10% was pretty common.
And that's really what the Charter Commission had been wrestling with at the time, was how do we make the signature requirement significant enough that people aren't just trying to change things at the drop of a hat, but not make it so stringent that it doesn't worth people's time. So that's where the Charter Commission landed.
Anybody else?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Mary, to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hearing's closed. So, now, would this be the first reading?
Correct.
So, we would need a motion to approve, and then it'll come back at the next meeting.
And hopefully you'll all be here.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by Gary, to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, we do not have anything under communications requests or petitions under unfinished business, is the comments and update on the comprehensive plan. And, and again, just wanna thank people for coming to the public hearings. There were two with the Planning Commission, one with the Joint Planning. Accepted comments that Craig provided in last week, or last meeting. And I think we all took those into consideration. Those got sent out, and, you know, we were able to read through that, read through the comp plan draft that was provided. Just want to stress again that this isn't about annexing property. I think all, yeah, through the document, it talks about trying to infill current city property and even redeveloping city property. And then also, you know, as, you know, Mr. Bobbier had written a letter to the editor and wondering about any, what was it worded, any obligations that township residents would be under if this was adopted. And that's one reason I talked to him the other night, was just to reassure him that the city doesn't have any jurisdiction outside of town. That's where the Joint Planning Board comes in, and again, their advisory to the, to the county board. So the city's got one vote on that, that's all. Joint Planning Area's got its own set of ordinances. We're not in here looking to make any changes in that. Even if we were, we're one vote that would get presented to the whole board. But again, it's just reaffirmation, really, and recognition of the change in the market from 2002, when it was, the last comprehensive plan was done. A lot more growth was going on then. On plans, the city plan. So, I don't know if, Mark, there were questions, or there was a question about these letters of intent that an email was forwarded to you about when the Joint Planning Area was actually adopted, and want to touch on that.
Right, yeah, I had gotten a copy of a letter of intent, I think it was from Hutchinson Township. And the city actually had copies of the letters of intent, I believe, from all of the townships.
In the city, I think.
Right. You know, and as you had mentioned, and the significant thing about those letters of intent, it had talked about this community-based planning that we talked about at the last couple of Planning Commission meetings. And at least the resolutions that were used to approve the Joint Planning Area didn't talk about this community-based planning concept. And as you had mentioned previously, Mayor, and I think Mr. Lauer had touched on this as well, you know, that really involves the Joint Planning Area, which is outside of the city limits of Hutchinson, so.
So really, the resolutions were the governing. And there was also talk about interim ordinance, which really didn't come into play in any of this either.
Right, that was another section of the statute that the writer had talked about, was that there was a requirement of the city of Hutchinson to implement an interim planning ordinance as it deliberated on the comprehensive plan. And certainly, the statute makes that an option for the city to do that. An interim ordinance is a technical legal word in the planning area, which basically means moratorium. And it gives cities the option to enact a moratorium for planning purposes while they consider a comprehensive plan. Certainly, the city doesn't have to do that. And obviously, with the consideration of our plan, we did not enact a moratorium to affect or halt planning.
You said that there's actually been $25 million worth of new valuation?
Yeah, actually, I think it was 26-something.
Just during this last couple of years.
Right, since the beginning of 2011, when the plan kicked off.
Okay. So with that, you know, staff suggested some changes, council suggested some changes. So, I thought this would be an opportunity just to go through what those were, and just for everybody's awareness.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. We've got a couple pages of city council comments that were provided to staff here, as well as, I believe, seven items that staff had found in the plan that were worthy of further clarification. And I guess, I don't know what you prefer the best way to go through these is, if you'd like to put, have me put these on the screen and go them, through them one by one, or?
I think so.
Okay. Try to zoom in here a little bit, so folks can see this. And comment one was page 10 of the comprehensive plan, figure 2.2, remove Stratesky property. That property actually has been returned back to Hassan Valley Township. And staff agreed that that was something that should be done in the plan. So I guess I'll just go through these. Stop me if you feel there needs to be comments or questions asked. Page 46, goal one, policy number one, add when it is needed at the end. Staff agrees. You know, there's not a lot of context on that one, and maybe?
I can, I got it here, yeah. It, that's the first policy where it talks about work with the county and adjacent townships to maintain very low residential densities within Hutchinson Joint Planning District, to promote the efficient extension of public utilities when needed. Obviously, that would be when land was actually annexed, when that would ever happen, so, and if it would happen, so.
Okay. Along those lines, page 46, goal one, policy two, remove the first sentence about orderly annexation. Staff agrees with that. Just a little bit of a clarification on that. Mr. Mayor, if you'd want to touch on that?
That's where it talks about developing orderly annexation plans for areas that are urban or about to become urban in character. I think, you know, orderly annexation agreements are still helpful. They're helpful for the townships and helpful for property owners in the action plan. You know, at the end, there's an item about that that would be talked about. But by removing that from there, the sentence would read, "Work cooperatively with the adjacent townships, the county, and property owners to encourage orderly growth and development," is what, how it would be worded.
Sure, and that aligns with the Joint Planning Board ordinance, that, that's what they try to do in that area, is to make things orderly. So, comment number four, goal one, policy five, suggests the following as replacement wording, "Encourage new development to make use of available lots and redevelop existing properties within the city limits before annexing new property and stretching city services." Next sentence is, "Continue the past practice of limiting annexation to the request of property owners and work with the adjacent townships to develop orderly annexation agreements when the," I believe that should read, "when the townships are ready," instead of just "they."
Yeah.
Just to make sure that it's understanding who "they" is.
Sure.
And then, the parentheses is, would suggest that this be moved up to policy number one, and then have the others moved down. Again, staff agrees with this clarification.
Yeah, I think that was the one policy in here that, you know, gave people some angst. And legitimately, probably, the way it was worded now is to work with surrounding townships to annex existing and planned urban development located within the city's planned growth areas, as services can be provided to those properties. So, again, we're not talking about annexing property. But again, if property owners, you know, want the city to look at that, that's, you know, kind of how it's been done. So, just trying to reflect more current practice with that.
Item five, page 54, goal 12, would be new policy number 17, "Continue the city's strong urban forestry program and efforts to diversify the local tree species to limit impacts from disease or insects. Work with the public and partners such as Hutchinson Utilities Commission, the DNR, and University of Minnesota to assist the city's efforts." And I believe this is related to, like, Emerald Ashmore and those types of tree diseases. And again, the staff agrees that this would be a good policy to add.
And that whole section really dealt with the natural resources, and that's why that seemed to fit with that.
Sure. Next section of comments here, number six, there's several bullet points underneath. Pages 54 and 55, goal 13 and 14, the idea is to combine these under a new goal 13. And then, several bullet points underneath, suggests new title of encourage and support the use of sustainable practices, energy conservation, the use of renewable energy when practical. Next bullet point, goal 14, policies can be wrapped into this revised goal. Then there was a question of what does "as right" mean in, in goal 14, policy three? And I believe what that means is, is that if a property owner, again, this is just a private property owner, wanted to do, for instance, solar energy on their house, they would have the right to do that, the ability to do that. And there's actually some state statute that allows that right now. The next one, page 54, goal 12, policy number 15, moving to goal 13 as policy. Obviously, some of this is really technical and without the context here. It's kind of hard to describe this, so I don't know if, how much time you want to spend on, on these. Like I said, stop me if you want to. There's really no way, good way to do this, I guess.
Goal 13 and goal 14 just both talked about some renewable energy, and, you know, can investigate options to facilitate some financing, working with the electric utility to look at opportunities. 14, really focused just on the solar. So, they're both on renewable energy and what might be possible. So just try to wrap them up together into one policy.
Sure. And I know there is some mandates that the utilities and those have to do in terms of renewable energy and some of those things. So this is, fits along with those renewable energy goals that the Utilities Commission and such have to, to meet as well. Next one, work with other agencies, such as HUC, the HRA, and Heartland Community Action Agency to promote energy conservation, and then investigate funding options such as PACE, rebate savings, recapture grants, low-interest loans, et cetera. Kind of goes into that same piece there. The next one, page 54, goal 13, policy one, local financing alternatives for solar, wind, biomass, renewable energy development. Believe on that one, were we gonna just maybe say just renewable energy? Because the fact that these things change over time. So, make that note, please, that, that'll be just renewable energy versus the solar, wind, biomass energy. And the state has a lot of programs through that that would be, could be tapped into. It's not like the city would be necessarily financing these things themselves. Page 54, goal 13, current policy two, what does enhanced distribution system reliability mean here? And then else, that's just in terms of making sure that, you know, in Hutchinson, we have a good distribution system for power. So, that can maybe be taken out, because I think most of our utilities are, I believe, buried. And then question if renewables help with distribution system reliability. I don't necessarily know that there's a tie in there. And then also, could wind be added to the community's solar development? So, again, those are some, some more technical ones that are related to the solar, or, excuse me, renewable energy piece. And the other thing I'll note here is, is that I think the way that these changes are gonna occur is, is that council can recommend what changes you'd like to see, and then we'll have a PDF version of the plan that can be reviewed. So if it's not quite right, or how it was anticipated, then it can be adjusted. So. Moving down towards the bottom of the page, again, take off the Stratesky property. It's pretty straightforward. The next one, page 67, top right paragraph, just clarification on joint planning, suggests the following, alternative language. You can't probably see it, but there's some red text here that's new. Land use requests in the Joint Planning District go through the Joint Planning Board and are approved by the county. Overall densities are dictated by the Hutchinson Area Joint Planning Ordinance. Properties in this area are not planned for annexation and city development in the foreseeable future. And I think- And I think the key there is, it kind of goes back to the comments that were made here earlier by Mr. Lawer and Mr. Mayor and Attorney Sabora regarding the kind of the policy or the practice of how the different units of government oversee the land use planning in, in this area. Number nine, not expected to be developed with city infrastructure or services for the foreseeable future based on current land consumption trends. Again, I think that's just, again, recognizing that at the time being, there's not a demand to, for annexation, those things, but also recognizing that, you know, if things change at some point in the future, then, you know, that'll have to be looked at again in 10 years or whatever, when the new comp plan is, is updated, so.
And again, that, currently, it's just, again, as Dan talked about, the joint planning area, agricultural land, and the future land use map, and just reiterating that it's not expected to be developed, you know, with city infrastructure services for the foreseeable future.
One thing I'll also note is, obviously, it's hard to see this, but the city's website under council packets, this can be found under a PDF of today's council packet, all this information, if people in the audience or people at home want to look at this in more detail. Page 80, goal one, new policy 10, encourage the construction of additional market rate rental properties in areas identified by the Maxfield Study. Encourage a portion of these to be built downtown as identified in the Imagine Hutchinson Plan. Staff agrees. I think the market study showed that there's, there's a need for some more rental housing downtown, and there's opportunities for that. So, it's a good one. Number 11, require active living components and new development with sidewalks and trails, access to parking, green space, et cetera. And again, that's good planning policy, in my opinion, to have sidewalks and trails, and it seems to be that folks want those in the developments that are, had been seen in Hutchinson and were seen. Sidewalks and trails added to them in the past. Page 82, should, should we say nearly half of city residents work in Hutchinson? Forty-nine point two percent of the 50.8 percent. I think this is the one where the context was, is the 49.2 percent was a majority, and it wasn't written well. I think the idea was, is that Hutchinson was the highest at 49.2 percent compared to any other comparable city where people worked.
Right.
So, for instance, you know, let's say 12% of the people worked in Glencoe, and 8% worked in Litchfield. Well, the majority was 49.2% Hutchinson. But again, the, this is a little bit better language, instead of saying a majority, which most people think is obviously over 50%. Next one, number 14, we need another picture, just in terms of highlighting or showing different businesses in the plan. That can be easily accommodated. Page 15, or comment 15, page 108, talks about the amount of parks in Hutchinson, and there's a little bit of discrepancy in the table in terms of the amount of total parks. I think it was related to that Bernhagen property, actually, in the next comment. So again, making sure that those tables are all in agreement with one another. I think the question there became is, the Bernhagen property is shown as a future park, but in the meantime, it's not park land, it's just land set aside for a future park. So, that'll be clarified. Item 17, again, just a clarification on the amount of parks, number four, was used twice. 18, the church over here that the city owns probably should be listed as some type of a special use park, because the Parks Department rents it out for different weddings and events that people want to rent it out for. So that should be listed. And then, moving along, item 19, again, some, this acreage of the parks, making sure that all this acreages are accurate. And then, number 20 is the same, making sure those are accurate. 21, related to the capital improvements program, and then the proposal is to take out, the CIP should be part of the city's comprehensive plan, and the sentence above, and add the following, the program outlines major projects the city plans to undertake in the next five to 10 years and how they may be financed. The CIP is updated every year for the next five-year period. And basically, that language that was in the old, was in the old comprehensive plan and talked about integrating the CIP into the comp plan, but that's never been actually in the comp plan, it's been referenced or referred to. So I think this is, more accurately reflects what's happening, how we compare our comp plan to the CIP plan. Number tw- item 22, page 127, 128, table 9.1. Again, item two is to reword, to work with adjacent townships to institute orderly annexation agreements when the townships are ready. And then make this a medium priority with a medium timeframe. It was listed as a high prior, priority and a short timeframe, and that was one thing with, when these things were put together originally, probably could have done a little better job of making sure that there was a little bit more thought that went into the table, and making sure these are correct is going to be important. So this is one of those. Let's see. Item four, change urban to city. I think there's also some confusion in what urban meant when city refers to the city in terms inside of city limits. Item six, consider creating architectural design guidelines. Now that's something that communities do in their downtown areas. Hutchinson has some of those to a certain extent already, and I think there needs to be some strong consideration to whether or not the city wants to undertake that or not. So I think considers a proper language there, instead of having it more-
Create.
Creating, softening that up a little bit. And then, again, on the next item, it's consider regulations that require future commercial developments in transitional areas to provide public open space. And again, right now, it's called parkland dedication fees. Anytime there's a development in the community, be it a residential, commercial, industrial, state law allows the city to collect fees for that, for parks and open space and maintenance. So, you know, that's an ordinance right now, and really, that's just kind of documenting that here, is that consider regulations or requirements to have open space or provide money in lieu of the open space. And then, E, items 10, 11, this really, staff suggests deleting this. It talks about identifying sites for new commercial, industrial office development. In essence, the future land use plan already does that with our commercial designations, industrial designations, et cetera. So, again, this is something that just causes confusion, and obviously, we don't want that. So, I think just deleting those items out that talk about further identifying sites other than what's done on the future land use map. Any questions on any of that? I apologize, it's pretty boring. One last comment from the council on this was item, actually, two more. F, support sustainable land use practices to protect, conserve, and enhance the city's natural resources. Now, some folks may not be aware, but the city's actually got quite a bit of natural resources within the city. We have Miller Woods, which is a, I believe, like a oak savanna, also native prairie in there, and then also several other prairie areas within the city limits that really provide a nice, you know, it's a good land used to have in areas that aren't being utilized for other uses, and it provides a good recreational benefit or wellness benefit for folks, as well as an environmental component. So, I think that's the idea there, is just to, you know, to support those, and I think the city's gotten some help from the DNR and others on those projects. 23, page 130 on parks, volunteer programs, change this to a high priority in short term. Obviously, city relies on a lot of volunteers now, especially in the Parks Department, and probably have more of a recognition of what we're already doing with volunteers in the Parks Department. So, before I move on to the staff recommended edits, does council have any questions or concerns on what I reviewed so far?
Anything?
Okay. I'll try to quickly move through these other recommended staff edits. Delete reference to appendix on page 31. Again, there seem to be some, you know, there was references to appendices for like the transportation plan, the housing study, and then the Imagine Hutchinson Plan. And really, there's no need for a reference of an appendix, that's a separate document. So, it was felt that just making sure that, you know, that appendix reference was taken out would just be a little easier to read and understand for folks. So all the appendix references are taken out, and again, they're related to the downtown plan, housing plan, et cetera. Then-
Can I make one comment on that?
Oh, sure.
On page 87, where the intro to the transportation piece, that never was referenced as an annex, but what it did do then was list where the plan could be viewed, you know, on the city website, or, you know, how somebody could get a copy of that. Maybe that same type of language could be referenced under each of these. So, again, if somebody's reading this, and okay, what's the Maxfield Study, or what's Imagine Hutchinson, you know, there's a place to go to to, to find that.
Sure. And I think that's more fair in that it's not an actual appendix, it's just a document that's, can be reviewed-
Right.
And more accurately reflects that. So that was the first four items, was deleting those appendices. And then, item five, delete item E under goal nine, talks about outdoor storage and about, you know, managing that, and I really think that's getting a little bit too much detail for the comp plan. Our zoning ordinance already kind of dictates where, where outdoor storage can't be allowed, so just, it's a little bit too, too detailed for this study. So, I would suggest deleting that. Next one, page 124, fourth paragraph, this talks about, you know, conflicts between the plan and existing zona, zoning. So, what the proposal would be is, where a conflict exists between the plan and existing zoning, the plan directives should prevail. Previously, it said must prevail. In cases where the comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan has not followed, the findings of facts for the zoning proposal should explain the reason for not following the comprehensive plan. And then in addition to that, it might be good to otherwise indicate that the comp plan itself could be, could be amended to reflect what the zoning says. Because some of these things, you know, you try to plan the best you can, but you really don't know until you have a proposal in front of you. So, I think it would be good to add some language in there regarding also amending the comp plan on item six there.
As another option.
As another option. And then, lastly, item seven, pages 127, 128, anywhere there's item, action items that start with create, and change that to consider, because it talked about some places about creating regulations and creating some of these things, and, you know, I don't think the city necessarily has intentions to create a bunch more regulations or red tape, but if there's some issues that come up, it needs to consider the best way to look at those issues and consider those. So, I think, again, considers a little bit better wording than create. I guess with that, the other piece of this that we didn't touch on is, just, you know, with a document the size, there's bound to be some typographical and formatting errors. I would ask that those be corrected. You know, obviously, we don't need to go through those one by one, a lot of them are just bullet point numbering items and some spelling type issues, that obviously, we want to correct those as well with this document.
And then the other thing, the planning commission had that one recommendation on changing the land use designation for that one property?
Yeah, the- Just so everybody's clear, there's a property that's not too far from the high school. Let's see here. That Mr. Brandon Fraser had came in to the first public meeting and mentioned that, you see this kind of a, almost an R-shaped piece here in yellow? The comp plan identified that as a low-density residential, and the previous comp plan had identified it as medium-density residential. There was a little bit of discrepancy in verbiage of what described those, so in reality, the use would have been probably this, almost the same under this versus what it was before, but the property owner felt more comfortable having that property designated as medium-density residential. So I would suggest that, as the planning commission did that, the council consider making that change on the map.
Anything else, Dan?
Yeah, there you can see that piece a little bit better there.
Yeah.
I believe that is all the comments that we had went through. Obviously, there was several pages of public comment that I had provided in the packet. I understand the planning, or the, excuse me, the city council had a chance to review those. And obviously, your comments reflected a lot of, I think, trying to, you know, either change the language or soften the language to, to react to some of those comments you received. So, I think that, just a piece there, that you, you did have a chance to review all the comments. And certainly, if there's anything else that we're, we're missing here, let us know.
Other comments, anybody? The council? So, what we could do is just direct staff to incorporate the suggested changes and then come back with a clean document for final approval whenever that's ready.
Yeah, I'll have to check in what the, what the timeframe is to get this amended and printed and things like that. I think the first thing to do would probably be to, just not have it printed as a hard copy, have some PDFs to review. That way, if we see something that needs to be fixed, we're not spending the money on printing costs. And that, obviously, when, I think after the council okays it, then we could go ahead and, and print the documents, you know? So, have a copy to review on the website and, or a copy that could be emailed out or whatever. Probably the easiest to start with.
It'd be good to have one on the website, too, so.
Yeah, certainly. I think, obviously, there's been a lot of interest in this. We want folks to be able to have opportunity to look at, you know, the changes that were discussed and, and review it.
Anything else, anybody?
Good God, Dan, a lot of work.
Yeah, there's a lot into it.
Lot of time.
People okay with that approach?
That sounds good.
Mayor? So we'll just put it on the agenda when they have it ready for the next-
I guess one question would be is, maybe for Attorney Sabora's, do you want a motion for something like this or not, in terms of moving this forward?
Oh, I think that would definitely be in order if you wanted to incorporate those changes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Gary, second by Mary, to incorporate the changes as noted and, and-
And the typos.
And the typos.
Yes.
Yep, definitely.
If that's part of it.
Yep.
I don't think anybody wants to read the typos, so.
Yeah. Changes as noted, the typos, and then that one land use designation. Just get all three of them on there. Is that, okay?
It can be put out for review.
Yep. Okay. All right, well, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so.
Thank you.
So again, it'll be able to be on the website later on, Dan, then, when it's ready, so we can get it on there.
Yeah, we can get that online, no problem, you know? Provide a link to folks that want to look at it, or it would just be available right on the front page there.
Yep. Hot topics there.
Hot topics. And, and we'll put the date on it, so there's no confusion of what, what's what, and we can leave the old one up there, too, for comparison purposes.
Okay.
So, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Said maybe add these suggested changes, that way people can find it, well, I guess in the packet, yeah. All right. Under new business, then, item A is consideration and approval of resolution number 14203, authorizing the PER phase retirement option for the city of Hutchinson, and designated the city administrator as the coordinator of the program.
Thanks, Mayor. Back in 2009, just to give you a little bit of history, the legislature passed the omnibus pension bill that really allowed PERA, which is, for the most part, the pension association that takes care of all the government and municipal employees' pensions as they retire. And what they did back in 2009 is they allowed PERA to offer a program for organizations to use as a tool for when people look to retire. for organizations to use as a tool for when people look to retire. It's really a tool that they can use to keep people on if they haven't been able to cross-train someone in an organization or in order to mitigate some of the hiring lag time it takes to make sure that there's no interruption in services, that things can be covered from that standpoint. So, really, what's in front of you tonight is a resolution asking for council to consider us just offering that paraphrase or that phased retirement incentive, particularly for the city of Hutch. How that kind of mirrors in with what we've talked about over the last several months is we've looked to offer that retirement incentive package to a lot of the employees within our organization, to take advantage of opportunities to restructure areas, to consolidate areas. And we've done this, you know, back in two thousand nine and two thousand ten, offered this incentive package out. The one thing we haven't offered is the ability to use this kind of phased retirement piece where it might be beneficial for the city of Hutchinson. So, in one particular case, at least, as we look at the overall early incentive program, there's only one person that fits into the eligible requirements of this pension phased program that's offered by PERA. And so, that individual that we're talking about is Marilyn Head, who's been with the DMV, which is, you know, obviously, the building or the place right next door to us. She's looking to take the early incentive program, but is also looking to stay on for no more than a year to help phase off, phase someone, you know, into her position, whether that's an internal or external candidate. Some of the areas that I looked at as far as bringing this forward were, obviously, with the DMV, it's really a state agency dictated department. For the most part, we oversee a lot of the daily operations and, you know, we're in charge of the staffing requirements. But really, the state really dictates how our operation functions, what types of fees we can charge. And it's really, for the most part, it's really a, it's a benefit that states allow other jurisdictions, whether they're locally or within those, in those larger cities, the opportunity to administer those programs. So, one of the big concerns that I obviously look at with the DMV in particular is it's a service that we provide in the city. And it's something that, you know, the community likes. It's a local area where they can come get their driver's license renewed, DNR permits and those types of things. But one of the things that also goes along with the responsibility of the DMV is that you make, is the accuracy of processing applications, whether they're driver's license, DNR applications, some portions of the passports and those types of things. And they're very particular about errors, issues, or not being able to do things appropriately. And in a lot of cases, have shut down DMVs and other jurisdictions for not, you know, being on top of the processing of transactions that run through that local department. So, one of the areas that, obviously, that I am looking at here is to make sure that we have a smooth transition for whoever that person is coming into her role. Because there's a lot of areas that she's doing now as far as state reporting, going to the legislature, sitting on a lot of the boards. We just don't quite have backfill and cross-train yet. And so, this would allow us to help cross-train some of that. And also have her there to support the motor vehicle function with a lot of the stuff that's rolled out from the state over the last couple of years. And I think I've talked a little bit about it, you know, through some of our budget workshops. As the state's revamped their systems, we're looking at entering or replacing our two software systems over there with two new current ones from the state. They're state systems that we use, and they're going to two new systems over there. So, we're having to learn two new systems as far as the DMV is concerned. And it also ties into the public safety systems as well that the state agency is incorporating. And that, obviously, that pans out to public safety and police and fire and those types of things. So, they're having to transition over the next year through two new software systems over there in addition to a lot more of the requirements that the state is posing on the local jurisdictions, meaning that they're going to do more of the paperwork, more of the application processing, more of the review. So, there's also an added risk factor to the employees working in the DMV that they're more personally not responsible for proper processing of whatever the application is depending on those areas. And so, obviously, making sure that they continually stay up to date on the state mandates, the state regulations, the cross-training, you know, that it's appropriately or that the recording continually happens. And there's, and with that's timeframes and deadlines. And we've got to make sure that we're continually meeting all those things with the transition of Marilyn moving on. So, probably a lot more detail than maybe what you want to hear, but those are a lot of different areas that I was looking at, you know, in particular with this position, that we need to make sure we have a smooth transition in that area. So, what I'm asking for council to consider tonight is allowing us to offer that program so that we can keep her on no more than a year to help transition through that area. And there will be some lag time in backfilling her position and some cost savings. And some of those details I need to work out with her particularly as this process moves forward, so. With that, I'll ask if there's any questions pertaining to that PERA program in itself.
Well, if you mentioned that there are reduced hours that are part of that, and so.
Right, yep. She can work no more than a thousand forty-four hours. And what I'm looking at right now with her is even less hours than that, somewhere in that seven, eight hundred hour ballpark range. But enough to, obviously, make sure that we have proper cross-training. She's there as a resource for the staff that are in the department moving forward. So, thank you, it's important to mention that she's the only full-time person in that position, in that department now, that motor vehicle department's being run by part five. So, obviously, that's a critical position for us to maintain the services and that function within the city, so.
On the second page of the memo, you know, we have the resolution. But then, the next page and the first sentence says the program will expire as of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. After that time, no new arrangements will be allowed, but existing arrangements may be renewed annually and continue up to the allowable five years. Can that be wrapped into that resolution, then? I mean, we're talking about it being done at fourteen, June, at the end of June. Do you see an issue with that?
No, because that's really the expectation. The only way that the, I mean, the legislature, they put the sunset on it as of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that.
It's for agreements, right.
Oh, okay. All right, so that's not really necessary, then, since it's already there. I thought that was our own suggested expiration.
And I know they have been considering renewing that. And to have, you know, I thought about that through the pension bill as well. Just because of the amount of people that are looking to be retiring in the government sector and the public sector in the next ten years is going to be tremendous as far as people in different areas from finance, engineering to all over the place. And they're starting to see some of that trickle-down effect already with trying to hire back people that have left positions and that have been in positions for twenty, thirty years and those sorts of things. So, it might come back up at the legislature again to see how they can soften some of that transition.
Private industry is doing the same thing.
Yeah, they are, right.
Any other questions? Preference?
I'll make a motion to approve going ahead with the program.
I'll definitely. Motion by Chad, second by Gary to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Yep.
Got a number of people sitting here. If they have no more comment, I think they can be released or are you going to have a time, some other place, for these people to make comments? I should have brought it up up here, but I didn't think fast enough on it. And I appreciate these people for spending all this time here. And I think that's what we have to recognize as a part of government, the people that put us in these jobs.
Sure. Somebody liked to, so you're talking about the comp plan, then?
Yes, comp plan, that's right. And I think that's why they're all here.
So, would anybody like to comment on the changes that you saw proposed, or Jim?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you very much. Thank you, Bill, for extending reach out there. Just for one pointed question, you know, we have had some meetings. We did, several questions were provided. Just from my understanding, can you identify a single thing that we had on the list that was adopted? Just curious.
I think you talked, there's a number of things about removing language with annexation. And, you know, we didn't do that. You know, we recognized the orderly annexation and tried to reaffirm that annexation wasn't the intent. There was one area in there to where annexation would be limited to, to property owner requests, and that's past practice, and we recognize that. But I don't think anybody, you know, wants to be boxed in, not knowing what, maybe it's mandated, like the Jefferson Street project was several years ago. And Bill talked about that, so. And really, in the end, you know, the plan can be amended. So, it's not, it's not binding in its own right that way. It's not the end result. Sure.
I just wondered what your comments were about the plan, any of your council members? Any of our comments, does anybody have anything they want to share with us?
Anybody?
Well, I think I got one. When I read this through, it always ended up on the taxes. You're going to save money. And I think the city of Hutchinson has done a tremendous job of saving money. I mean, we haven't raised our levy for years now, right?
Yep.
I think a lot of people in the city might disagree with that, but that's probably something we'll have to discuss at another time because there's a lot of things that get spent on that we wonder, what are we spending this on? And a lot of different things around town. So, I think it would almost take a one-on-one discussion with some of us to explain to us what some of these items are around the city we're spending money on.
Well, and that's not what this is.
I understand, yes, yeah. But there's a lot of things in the plan, like when we talked about earlier today, sculpture art, trails, a lot of things like that. There's no itemization in the plan about how much any of this is going to cost. And so, my question to you this afternoon was, it seems like to me it would be a logical thing in a plan. If you're going to, you want to implement something, you're encouraging it with something. You would tell us how much is it going to cost to do this? Solar power, sculpture art, like I said, trails, all these different things. Wouldn't that, that just seems like as a regular citizen, you would want to do that.
And as I explained, you know, we do have a comprehensive or CIP plan that talks about the budget for five years. It's a rolling five-year that has all the planned infrastructure, facility improvements. And basically, anything, basically, anything over ten thousand dollars is incorporated into that. That's, the dollar amount is way more than what we're going to spend. But it tries to capture some of those things that were identified and then to help enable the plan.
Could I, could I have somebody send me a copy of that?
It's online.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I can forward you the link, too.
Yeah, if you want to just form me a link and then I can just look over it. Because I guess I wasn't really, I didn't want to wear that or whatever, so. What about things under ten thousand dollars? How does that get, I mean?
It's all part of the budget process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd just like to briefly comment that one of my personal concerns about the comprehensive plan and also other plans of the city is about economic development. And what we really need to be an economically vibrant community is good, high-paying jobs. And I think we can all agree on that. My concern with the comprehensive plan is two things. One is that I think it's a little bit misguided in that it prioritizes that resources be spent on quality of life issues and making this an even greater place to live, but at the expense of not putting enough emphasis on things that would really help economic development and recruit additional employers. And so, I think it's fifteen percent misguided from that standpoint. And the second is what I tried to address earlier, is that I think there is a problem with people using these planning opportunities to put things into the plan, which are their personal agendas rather than what's really best for the community. And they are using this to put, to line their own pockets or just to personally create the vision that they have for the community as opposed to what's really the people's will. And so, those are my two concerns about the directions being gone.
And I guess the EDA does have a plan. Again, David, if you or anybody else has specific recommendations or other EDA plans or other EDA programs that could be emulated, if you'd share them with the city, with Jeremy, you know, that'd be a place to start. And that's, that's fine, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe I took you to dinner with the former EDA director at Mitchell Center.
And- I'm aware of that.
Right.
Really, that was really to be introduced to the people with hometown investments. And he was one individual. And I know he submitted one kind of a bullet point document on some ideas. But again, if there's other things more specific, that's fine.
Well, and what we also did is extended our willingness to work with the city or work with the EDA on fleshing out some of those ideas. And there's never been any follow-up on those.
Okay. Anything else? Sure.
Just got a real quick one. So, the various commissions around town, just a point of information, is it possible for people to attend that? Is that a public meeting or do you have to be a member? Do you have to be a member of Hutchinson or anything, or?
They're all public meetings, so.
Okay.
They're all on the calendar.
Okay. And then, one thing with the monthly meetings on like the Art Commission, seems like there's been a problem posting those for quite a while. And is there website problems or something? Are those notes available, minute meetings and things like that?
We can find out. I don't know. They're only meeting every other month now. So, I don't know if that-
Okay, I think it's been, what over a year or something? It's been like a year or something, so the last notes, just kind of curious if there's-
Okay.
What's going on, but anyway.
All right.
One more question. Can you, can you comment about what Jim was talking about as far as in those minutes of, what was that, that there's going to be taxing on citizens for public art? Could you comment on that, please?
There wasn't that in the minutes. Actually, how, you know, really, in reality, how that's being funded now is there's some money out of our public sites that was seed money. And then, going forward, there's some money in the CIP plan that's set aside fifteen thousand dollars a year.
But I think, isn't that in the commission or the Public Arts Commission? Isn't that in there somehow? Wasn't that Jim? How does that, how did you have that read?
That's not how it's going to be funded. Those were options that could be explored. And this is what I, I just told you how it is being funded, though.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to make sure that I explained it the way Jim had explained it to me because it sounded like it was going to be mandated. That's what it sounds like. I'm just, that's my comment.
Well, you can say what you want, but that's not what's happening.
Okay.
It's not what has happened.
I'm just asking, so that's all I'm, I'm just asking. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. We, there was discussion before if there was any need for another meeting of some kind before it finally got it, you know, the recommendations went through. I think we've had lots of opportunities from public open houses to the public hearings, to reviewing this, to what we did tonight again. Now, I think we read through the comments. We're hearing some of the same comments even tonight now that were listed before. And so, I don't know if having another meeting would add anything new. And we tried to take some of those recommendations and into some of the changes in the documents, other things. There's like public art and trails. Well, there's a lot of people that like public art and trails. And, you know, so I think- Well, there's a lot of people that like public art and trails, and, you know, so I think the council has always recognized we try to do what's good for the community as a whole. And, uh, if the voters decide otherwise, well, that's what, um, they've got that opportunity. So I don't know if the council, uh, has a desire to have another meeting, but...
I don't have a desire to have another meeting. Three and...
Any else?
I don't have the desire to have another meeting either. I appreciate your comments, you know, and it's good to hear from all of you. And you talked about the EDA, you know? Come and join us at a meeting. You know, they're published on, on the city calendar. You're welcome.
But just so you know, it's not open discussion. I mean, you're there as a guest, so, not many of them. So, anything else?
That's the same with the Planning Commission or Joint Planning. It's always an open meeting, so...
Park Board, Tree Board.
Library Board.
Library Board.
Senior Board.
Seniors. The more the merrier. Anything else? Thanks, everybody. And thanks, Bill. Item B is the Police Memorial Update in consideration for approval of moving forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to do three brief things. One is just to give a review or, um, there's a video, a brief video that I'd like to show that kind of outlines exactly how the park will look and what it, what all the parts will be. And then there'll be a brief update in regards to where we're at in that process. And then finally, obviously, we'll be asking council for their approval to move ahead with the project, so, um... I'm here to speak to you today about our efforts to build a law enforcement memorial park within the city of Hutchinson. There are many great parks in Hutchinson, but none of them dedicated to law enforcement. We are currently seeking donations to help build this park in the city. In this video, you will hear from current and former law enforcement officials as to why this park is important, and I will show you in detail our unique plan for the park.
You know, this park really represents to me both, well, all three, the past, the present, and really the future. You know, it's a legacy for, for the officers that have worked here over the years and for the community in what regards to the legacy of what this police department has meant for this community. But I also see it as a representation for the officers of today, what it means to be a police officer for the city of Hutchinson, and what Hutchinson sees and what the police department means to this community. And third, I think it truly is a representation for the future in regards to what will it mean to young people who are thinking about becoming police officers tomorrow, or maybe at the point they haven't even thought about becoming a police officer, and yet they'll know and see or get a little feel for what it means to be a police officer in this community and what, what this community needs from its police department in regards to professional services. So I really see this park being a representation of the past, the present, and the future of things to come in our community.
The park will be located along the Crowell River between the loose line trail and Third Avenue Northwest. This area will be just across Third Avenue from Casper's Chiropractic Clinic. The park itself is designed around the shape of the police badge, a recognized symbol of professionalism, dedication, and service when worn by the men and women who diligently protect our community. The signature element of the park is a six-foot tall bronze sculpture by local artist Deb Zeller. The sculpture was shaped from photos of an actual Hutchinson police officer and is a true representation right down to the uniform and badges they wear. Just beyond the sculpture is a portal. The portal represents the vigilant watch and never-ending protection law enforcement diligently provides our community. There will be a thin blue line constructed of blue slate pavers. The thin blue line is a well-known and respected symbol demonstrating the line between men and women that knowingly agree to stand between us and those that might do us harm. There will be an area of the park to honor fallen officers. A slightly raised stone wall will host granite memorials of local police officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice to protect and serve. There will also be a spot to honor past and present officers and community members. Flat granite memorials will line this area, reserved for honoring deserving members of the police department and community on a special basis for extraordinary acts and sacrifices. Our goal is to break ground for the park in the spring of 2014 and have it completed in late 2014. The completion of the park coincides with the 25-year anniversary of Officer Mike Hogan's ultimate sacrifice.
As a retiree from Hutchinson Police Department, I support the construction of the law enforcement park. It provides an opportunity to, in a sense, bring back, uh, the generations of police officers who have served the department over its entire history.
If the law enforcement men and women in our community have made an impact on your life, please consider showing your support by making a donation to the park. You can make a donation at www.hutchinsonlawenforcementpark.com or by calling me at 320-234-4283. I look forward to seeing you at the dedication, and thank you for the support.
Okay, so, um, here's, here's where we're at. And I won't, I'll skip through a lot of this and get right to the, right to the timeline and, um, where we're at here with 2013, the land was dedicated, that has been completed, the final design has been completed, identif, the identifying of contractors has been completed, and the final costs have been determined to be, um, the goal of $90,000. What we're going to ask, or what I'm asking for tonight ultimately is going to be the go-ahead from the council, the authorization to go ahead and begin the construction of this project. The biggest piece being the statue needs some eight months to, to order it, to create it, and have it ready for installation later next summer. So that, that's really kind of that timeline. And again, our goal is $90,000, and I am extremely pleased to announce that we have to date raised some $92,000 already. So the basis of this project has been, um, has been funded by the extreme generosity of members of this community. It, it really only took about three months of active, um, work in regards to trying to, to get donations, and, and the donations continue to, to come in. And so really, the plan is, is obviously to build the park with the dollars that have been donated and also maybe even continue to enhance the park if possible. For example, the original plan does not show flagpoles in there, so as those dollars become available, a very appropriate addition to that park would, would be flagpoles. So those are things that we're still looking at. We're still accepting donations, and, and obviously, the dollars will continue to come in also with, with the pavers as the, as officers past and present and then into the future by those pavers to be identified. So with that, are there any questions in regards to the layout of the park, the plan, the funding?
I have a question for you, Dan. On the funding part, how long will you leave the website up so that if people want to continue to give into 2014 or for even after that, would you still have the website?
Yeah, there's, there's not an intent to close the, uh, the website right now, and the biggest reason is, is that we still will receive donations, we'll still accept donations, and it is a way for especially past officers, an easy way for them to contribute to the park and get their, get their name on a paver if they wish, or even, and I'll give one brief example, the family members of Chief Bedarius had contacted me, and so we, we've talked with the family members, and, and they're extremely excited about it and wanted to make sure that their, you know, that their, um, family member was on the, on one of the pavers, and, and that's, that's how that will happen also. So the family members can contact us, or they can use that website.
Well, it's kind of nice, especially with the holiday coming up, you know? It might be something you could give to someone who has a lot of, you know, who has a lot of things, and it'd be a nice gift.
A really nice idea.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be surprised at all if a lot of family members of current police officers are thinking about doing that specific thing for their, for their son or daughter. So, again, I, I'm pleased to announce that we've raised all that money and, um, I, I'm not surprised that we've raised the money. I am extremely surprised that the citizens of this community stepped up within less than three months and, and have donated over $90,000. So with that in place, what, what we're asking council is for the authorization to move ahead in the beginning of the construction of that, of the park.
I will make that motion.
Well, I'll second that right away, but I have a question for Dan.
Yes?
Is there a possibility, Dan, that you could maybe put together a future down the road, maybe additions to the park after, you know, like you said, flagpoles and, you know, that'd be a nice, nice thing for people to know that, you know, if we do, if you do, well, you do have enough money, but this is the additions that we're going to add to the park?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a great idea, Gary, and that's exactly what our plan is, is so for two reasons. One, that we, people who are donating know exactly what their dollars are going for, that it's, it's not just going into this pile of money. The other aspect of it is, is so that there is an organized plan for any additions to that park so that, again, if somebody comes in with another very generous donation but wants to add something kind of obscure to that park, that we have those guidelines that say the types of items that will be added to it if, if any at all. So, yeah, there'll be that piece to have that kind of orderly plan, if you will.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely, it is a great idea.
So just to add on to Bill too, there's several authorization points in this one. So I'll get them altered and you can authorize them however you want. First authorization is we really need to officially authorize dedicating that public space for a park. We talked about that, and that's kind of been the context is that's the area where we'd look to put a public park, but we haven't officially taken action on that. So that's the first action item that the council would consider making that area a park. Second action item would be then authorizing the, the project to move forward on that park space. And then third would be if we have to cash flow some of that project, having council authorize cash flow on that project, and then getting the reimbursements back over time, and then any additional fundraising dollars coming in be set aside in the public sites fund for future ongoing things.
Yeah, currently, as...
We dedicated that? Oh, we didn't.
No, we looked back at the, we didn't dedicate, we talked about that was the area where it was going to be, but we didn't have officially approve that. So we can do all, all the three or four that are described in one motion if you want. So I make sure we're not missing out on all those points.
Yeah, and just for clarification in regards to what Jeremy is talking about, we, we currently have, out of that $92,000, 53 are in pledges, and, and the longest one will go up until or through 2016, and then the, and then all of the dollars would be collected at the, that's how, that's the longest any of them would go.
So all at once, or?
Do you want me to reiterate that?
Yeah, just read them, read it again.
First item is to have the council approve turning the public space into an official park.
Can I stop you there a second? You know, with the Senex property and Shoreland regulations, we talked about possibly incorporating that into a property down the road, you know, but having an easement so that the park can still remain, you know, we're, we'd still be okay with that.
Right, correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So that'd be the first action item is to turn that, designate that public space as a, as the Hutchinson Law Enforcement Park moving forward. Second conversation point and decision point is, once you've dedicated the parcel, to approve moving ahead with the project on the park. And the third area, which is really two parts, is approving cash flowing the project and getting reimbursed from all the pledges coming in, and then any additional pledges beyond that $92,000 that Dan talked about in his presentation, that those set aside in the public sites fund to be earmarked for the memorial park moving forward. Just as we've done with a lot of other areas in our public sites fund, those things can be earmarked for different things, so that we're not using those pledges for other areas.
I'll still make that motion, carry all four of them.
And I'll second that again. All right. Motion by Bill, second by Gary, on those four, any further discussion? I guess a couple, a month ago, we talked about maybe the city contributing something to the park, and, um, why don't we contribute the flagpoles, or, I mean, maybe come back with the cost of that? I mean, again, as our contribution and appreciation for the service that our police officers provide to the community.
And, and I can easily come back with, with those estimates on what that would be.
Sure. I'm sure going forward, there's going to be some other things that is, you know, has been talked about, but to have those right up front and be a part of the project for the dedication would be really nice.
Dan, before you sit down, will there be any benches in there? Will there be, is that in part of the plan?
Yeah, yeah, the plan does have, um, some benches or two benches there, and the, also the, the, the wall that's described specifically where Mike Hogan's name will go will also be basically at a height that, that would be usable. I mean, that's not what it's designed for, but it would be usable, you know, because it would ultimately be ideal for people to, and the plan is, is for it to be a place where people can come and, and actually spend some time.
So we still need a, we still need a vote, right?
Correct.
So, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and on behalf of myself and a very appreciative department, thank you for your, for your willingness to allow this to occur and, and obviously for the very generous citizens of this community who have donated their hard-earned dollars for this, this park. So thank you very much.
Hutchinson is pretty lucky. Okay. Next is item C, automatic meter reading system and meter replacement discussion. Turn it on.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a tough act to follow, I guess, so you have to be satisfied with the memo here, not a video, but... This is, uh, something that was passed out this evening. Obviously, this wasn't in your council packet, but it's an outline of a discussion following up on a resource allocation committee, uh, meeting a few, couple of weeks ago here, and, actually, last week for that matter. And so we, uh, and really, it's a variety of discussions that have happened over the last probably five years almost now. But, but anyways, it's, uh, the discussion is with respects to a automatic meter reading and then also water meter replacements. And this is an item that's been considered, uh, I guess, proactively even before 2010, or actually 2009, which is alluded to in the memo, but it really came to light back in, in 2009, and that's when the Hutch Utilities basically built their AMI system, their automatic meter reading or metering infrastructure. Since then, uh, you know, there was some basic information put together then. Since then, city staff has really dug in...
Since then, city staff has really dug in, and what we've started to do is inventory our water meters. And that's what basically the first paragraph under current situation describes. There's a variety of records, building records, obviously, water metering records within the billing department. Our logist system had some records with respect to meter ages, installation dates, and the like. So, it took a bit of staff time to sit down, compile that variety of information, and really arrive at what the age of our meters is. And to put it, I guess, in simple terms, is we have just over 4,800 meters, ranging in sizes from three-quarters of an inch to six inches. The age of existing meters range from, you know, relatively recently, obviously, if there was a new home built this summer, there's a new meter in it, obviously, to older than 1983. Once we get beyond 1983, the records got a little fuzzy, and they were just tough to follow. But what we're able to arrive at is there were about 852 meters older than 1983. And then, if you start to break down all the data, we estimate 82% of the meters, about almost 4,000 of the 4,800 meters, were installed in 2000, year 2000 or later. And that's really a threshold that we wanted to establish in this data analysis because the typical life cycle of a meter is about 15 years. That's the industry standard. What I'll get to later here is actually that the meter that we're looking at is warranted for 20 years. So, the accuracy of the meters, the functionality of the meters has improved over time here, and there's a better product out there today. But going back to the 15-year standard, you look at it, you know, we're looking at a meter replacement project potentially, you know. Obviously, next year is 2014. Whether or not the project will be addressed in 2014 is highly questionable, just timing, and there's other things that the city is undertaking. The primary one being a new utility billing software program. That really would be tough to implement a meter, new meters and new meter reading infrastructure when that's ongoing. So, to continue on and really tie this back to where I started, the AMI system that utilities installed back in 2009. They installed that system, and some of you might remember, and there were some conversations back then at the Resource Allocation Committee, and I think briefly at the City Council. What that meant to the City Water Department was $194,000 was invested in basically the backbone of a automatic meter reading system that the City Water Department could utilize. And really, that's the towers, the interface, the software, et cetera, that could be utilized for our meter reading services, our system. To follow up on that in 2010, Hutch Utilities in the city entered into a telecommunications agreement that allowed the Water Department to utilize their installed AMI system, basically what was put up on two water towers in town at that point for a contribution of 58, just over $58,000. That has never been paid to Hutch Utilities. That was just the agreement that was put in place at that time. Ultimately, that arrangement allows the city to utilize that for water metering purposes going forward. Last paragraph on the page alludes to basically the work we've done, you know, tying the two together. You know, we have two things here, we have old meters out there. We're relatively confident, some of them are performing pretty well. On the other hand, we have a large number, you know, that are very old, you know. But like I mentioned earlier, 150 of them approximately are over 30 years old. When you tie that back to the automatic meter reading system, you know, if you're going to touch the meters to put in a transmitter, this is another approach that we looked at, we were looking at five years ago, is we would put a transmitter on the existing meter interface, and that would basically transmit out the meter read to the water towers. And that could be relatively easily accomplished based on the meters we have. We have a census meter, that's the vendor, and that's ultimately, that's the vendor that utilities used to put in this automatic meter reading system, and what they're now using for their gas meters and their electric meters. So, brings us to this day and age, and we're really at a point now, if we're going to go in there and touch these meters, whether it's putting in transmitter or replacing them, you know, how should we go about this? And you get into labor costs, and Andy will talk a little bit more about that. But we're at a point where if we're going to touch the meters and realizing the age of the meters out there, we should go in there and replace the meters and obviously, may have those meters have the ability to transmit a signal to the automatic meter reading system. I know that was a lot, if there are any questions? Otherwise, I'll get into, on the back page here, a little bit about benefits. Some are tangible, some are a little less tangible.
You see the ones that are old, a thousand or whatever, close to an 850, you know, those seem like a no-brainer.
Yep.
The other ones that are still relatively newer, maybe not so. I mean, if we put on the transmitter now, that's still outside, right?
That is correct.
Correct. Add meters as we go forward.
Yep.
They'd still be compatible, it's just you'd have two trips going out. If you did the one now and then went back five years later and installed a meter.
Ultimately, replace that meter at some point in time in the future. Yeah, you look at that inventory, and you're looking at 4,800 meters. You break down the 800 that have been installed in the last 15 years post-2000, and really, those meters are, you know, they're weighted to the 2,000 end of the spectrum, not the 2013 end. So, you know, if we break down the numbers even more, I think it's going to be a question of, you know, you look at the number of housing permits and new commercial structures in the city. You know, if we're going to have somebody in and have a relatively large contract install new meters, I think we're going to be talking about a small number of meters, you know, that have been installed in the last five, six years. You can just think of the housing, you know, permits alone. You know, we're talking a handful, give or take, and then, you know, you can, commercial businesses, new structures, you can count them. So, in my mind, you're getting to a point, so there's going to be some economies of scale there, you know, to address them on the front end if you let a contract and, you know, you arrange the labor to accomplish the task. But that's something staff could, will definitely break down and analyze further. You know, maybe where is that threshold? Like I mentioned on the back page, we get into just a quick menu of benefits, more accurate water use readings. We figure probably a potential of an estimated 5% deviation that's occurring right now, you know. So, obviously, the deviation is more than likely going to result in an increase to a ratepayer. Where typically, when a meter's reliability erodes, it's not reading as much water unless something has functionally gone wrong with the meter. Increased meter functional reliability, like I mentioned, 20-year accuracy and battery guaranteed guarantees on the meters that we're looking at. Reduced carbon footprint, this gets into the current automatic meter reading approach that we have today. You know, we'd be eliminating vehicle use for monthly readings, and then also the follow-up trips that are associated with that approach. On-demand reads available to staff to monitor water usage. You can address service calls and customer inquiries relatively easily. That information would be real-time available to, you know, city staff. Potentially provide customers a web portal, you know, potentially have that interface for people to monitor their water use. Proactive approach to customer leaks, also, you know, real-time information, be able to tell people potentially what's going on or warn the property owner there's a water service break or a water main break within their property. Identify distribution system water loss issues. This gets back to really city staff, Water Department staff, being able to hone in on different areas, you know, of the city and our distribution system. We'll have real-time data that's being attributed to specific properties and specific areas of properties that are tied to, obviously, a section of our distribution system. Historical consumption data, you know, this, you could derive all the data you want to do with this system, quite frankly, just a matter of how much data we'd want to house on a server. So, I mean, this can be hourly, it could be, it's obviously real, almost real-time. So, yeah, the data is almost limitless. Baseline comparisons by customer type. Yeah, like I said, you get back to a lot of good data that you can derive from the system. Conservation rate structure applications. We touched on this a little bit at the workshop earlier this evening, getting into maybe different rate structure approaches and really being able to derive a rate structure that, you know, it can get, quite frankly, very specific to different dynamics with people's water use, you know. And it can, you can, like, the next bullet point alludes to is irrigation restrictions and bans and enforcements, and those are the things that the DNR really wants to pursue with this state law that was passed a couple of years ago. And you could, you could see those variations in people's water use and really determine what they're using for, quite frankly, pretty closely, what they're using for your irrigation use, if you wanted to, with your rate structure. Substantial personnel and vehicle use savings. Basically, the meter reader function would go away, almost in its entirety, and really, the only callouts would be if a meter was not functioning, which that would be obvious to us in the data that we were receiving. And potential utility billing process streamlining. Yeah, obviously, the data would be compiled easier. There isn't, you know, there isn't the field person out there with the gun pointing at the meter, bringing it back, doing a download, and then breaking down the data, you know. And that's different routes, and it takes time and effort. Otherwise, on here, we went out and we got a little bit of city, other city feedback. These people are using the same system that we're proposing to use, the census FlexNet technology. And like I mentioned, that's what utilities installed basically five years ago. North St. Paul, 5,000 meters, very similar to us. They're funding it with their current base charge, implementing it over a three-year timeframe, same system. And then, noted that significant increase in water billing amounts, especially within their commercial accounts. And why they're saying that probably with respect to their commercial accounts is it's typically larger meters, so there's more water flow. So, if you have a percentage increase, obviously, that's going to result in more revenue on a commercial user.